Well, good evening, everybody. Could you please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance? Place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's convene open session. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could the city clerk please read the instructions?
Individuals wishing to address the City Council are requested to complete a speaker card and deliver it to the city clerk staff prior to the item being heard by the City Council. Please observe a three-minute limit for communication, and once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residency residence for the record. Mayor, I do want to note that there were a couple changes to the agenda. Item 7.12, the presentation, was revised, and item 7.13, the staff reports and the exhibits, were revised.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Edwards. There are no proclamations or recognitions or presentations tonight. Let's go to the meeting minutes from the City Council meeting of January 15, 2025. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public for the meeting minutes?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Second.
Move in a second. It's a little slow, Sylvia. All right, please vote. I don't know about your guys' screen.
Mayor and council members speak.
Yeah, my screen's doing some weird stuff.
Take your voice vote, Mayor.
Aye. Yeah, let's see. And that passes 5-0. All right. Consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports of documents covering previous City Council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion with the concurrence of the City Council. A council member or any person in attendance may request that an item be removed for further consideration. Would my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. 7.6, please.
Anybody else?
7.5 and 7.13.
Okay. Jackie's good. All right. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards for any of these items?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for the consent calendar.
Okay, then let's, I'd like a motion for all items except for 7.15, or 7.5, 7.6, and 7.13.
So moved.
Wes, is there a second?
Second.
Jackie's seconded, please vote. And I'm an aye, Sylvia. Oh, wait, let me see if it works this time. It's gonna work this time. Okay. And all those items pass by nothing. All right, 7.5, council members speak.
Thank you. I just wanted to know, there were only, Mr. Ellis, so there was only two bidders, I think, that made it through the round, and one was substantially higher than the other, and we chose the lower, which is the right thing to do and the legal thing to do. I just wanted to know what the engineer's estimate, because it wasn't in the staff report.
Yeah, the engineer's estimate was between 140 and 180,000.
Okay. That's great. I just wanted to make sure we were in the ballpark, and we didn't have somebody that was lowballing and come back to us a bunch of change orders, so, great.
Any other questions on 7.5? Would you like to make that move?
Yes, sir. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Edwards, do I need to do public comment on that? No, no, because nobody pulled from it, right?
We still do, because it was pulled from the consent, but we don't have any speaker cards for the item.
Very good, thank you, Tom, yeah. Okay. And that... It's gonna pass, I think.
Councilmember Casillas?
Sorry. I don't know why, sorry. Yes, I went through.
All right, that does pass, 5-0. All right, Tony, you had 7.6.
Yeah, I just, I was, just was going over, Chief, I was just hoping for some clarification. Were utilizing a grant for this? Is that correct?
Correct. Assistance for firefighters grant, AFG grant.
Gotcha. I love that. Other people's money is our favorite thing. The other thing is, is I thought that we just had a, maybe a year or two ago where we just replaced a lot of radios, but are these mobile radios going in vehicles?
Exactly. So we had a two-phase replacement of our handheld radios that happened over two budget cycles, and this is us moving to incrementally replace our mobile radios to support the new radio system we're transitioning to.
Is this, are we good on radios now? Is there anything else that we need radios in? Or I'm just kinda curious.
There'll be some more mobile radios down the road, but we wanted to capitalize on, to your point, other people's money. And the nice thing about this is, shockingly, it came in under estimates, so we'll be able to purchase more with their money.
I appreciate that, so, so thank you for, you know, one of the things that we talked about here is obviously, you know, going after grants, going after ways that we could be creative, and so, you know, hats off to your team that found this, and I appreciate it, and I just wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly, so with that, I'll move.
Can we see if anybody from the public wants to comment?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Okay, we gotta move, move, Tony? Any second?
Second.
Ms. Casillas, please vote. There we go. And that passes 5-0. Item 7.13, Wes.
I just had a couple of items. Everything looked pretty normal to me. I just had a couple of questions. One on, I think it's on E, it's the increase for animal, the animal hospital. I just wanted to just double-check, when was the last time that we competed this work? I get that the shelter is beyond full, and we're probably, you know, obviously spending more money than we thought, and I'm just curious about when's the last time that we did go out for bid?
Yeah, I don't know if we have a date. It predates probably the chief and myself both. So it's been a long time.
Okay, and this is, do we have a contract with them, or is it a...
With the animal, with veterinary services?
Yes.
I think we have three. Chief?
We do not have any contracts. We utilize services of three veterinarians, but the problem is, is we do not have, we have not gone to bid for, request for proposal for, to lock them into a rate that we can rely upon and budget, and so we're at their whim, and if they're busy, they charge us, and each one of the veterinarians or hospitals that we use will vary their charges based on their intakes and the, and so we're kinda at their will. So we know that that's been an issue. We've identified that. We are currently working with purchasing, and the RFP is out, and we're working to put that out now to stabilize that, and we'll adjust our budget accordingly once that's been stabilized.
Okay, that was really my question, so I appreciate it. It sounds like we should have something that we could rely upon. I know it's, we can't control the intakes, but it would be nice to know what, what things were gonna cost us in the future. And then the second one was, I'm happy to see the revenue fund that we're setting up for, on item J, that we're setting up for downtown. I was curious, and when we get to the point where we start leasing, will be, when we do our financial workshop, will there be something come back to us to show us, you know, where we are, kinda how we have for the airport?
Yeah, yeah, we do intend to report out on how, what the expenditures and revenues are, what exactly that looks like, still working on it, but we do intend to report on it, and how that's progressing, for sure.
That was my only question, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Colleagues, have any questions on it? Ms. Edwards, any speaker cards on it?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Wes and Jackie, please vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay, number eight, communications from the public. This portion of the agenda is intended for general public comment on items within the council's jurisdiction that are not listed elsewhere on the agenda. Please note that state law prohibits the City Council from discussing or taking action on these items. Please observe a three-minute limit for comments, and once called upon to speak, please state your name and your city of residence for the record. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public?
Mayor, yes, we have one speaker card for communication from the public.
Okay. Come on down, looks like Maddie.
Good evening, Mayor Steiner and council members. I missed the first meeting of the year, so I want to say happy, happy new year to everybody here. The second thing to start the year off right is the, my social media is limited to Facebook, and I just wanted, I've made a note that, I've spoken to Sean, that lately, it's been really nice to see all the communications that we have regarding the police department, the fire department, and all, everything that's put out there is making this seem like a real family-friendly place, so kudos to them for doing that, and kudos for the actual, we now have progress in front of the 99 cent store, so thank you for that. Last night, I was asked to attend the Riverside City Council meeting, the homeless and Housing and Homeless Committee, to speak in regards to support their RSO ordinance that they want to have revised. I wish I had a printer that, but it's broken. There are several cities within Riverside County that already have their RSO in place. Corona, as you know, does not. The last I knew, it was put on hold. And I just want you to be aware that with this unsure economy, it's very, very important that we do this. A lot of people that are on Social Security alone are living in mobile homes, and we know that's the first rung of homeownership. And the problem is, my cost of living on Social Security was less than 3%, and I signed a 25-year lease agreement where I was told it was supposed to be a max of 3% increase. Well, buried, this is microscopic print, and buried way in the back, there's a clause that said, "We get to renew every five years," and I was raised 10% this past summer, which is a lot. Last night at the meeting, they discussed what the definition of fairness was. There was at least 25 speakers and at least five on Zoom. It went, the meeting went about three hours long. There was both mobile homeowners and park owners and managers that were there, some of which we've seen here before. And what they are wanting to do in Riverside County, in Riverside City, is have a floor of 0 to 2%, uh-oh, I don't see the timer, and a ceiling of 3 to 5%. So again, I just would like to request that we re, we look at again of the RSO issue within the city of Corona. Thank you.
Maddie, I thought they voted 4-1 for a floor of 2, and they voted 4 to 1, set the floor at 2. I think they're going back to committee?
They're going back to committee, so to me, that really wasn't, it wasn't determined completely, but that was what the major, the major draw was, so yeah, you're familiar with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maddie. We got another speaker?
Good evening. Joe Morgan, 2063 Wren. I just want to say a few words. Last Saturday, we went to, we had a kinda commemoration of life service. Ed Faxon, and I want to make sure he was talked about in this room. Ed was a local businessman. His business started here in Corona, actually started in a house directly across the street from ours on Wren, and we moved in after he had moved to Magnolia and Sixth Street. Faxon Auto Literature is one of the, you know, basically the biggest auto literature company in the, in the country at this point. They moved to Riverside, I think, in the early 2000s, but Ed was more than just, you know, the guy that sold the books, very special guy, a divinity student. He was actually a pastor for a while, just kinda lived 100 lives, was traveling the country, buying and selling books. It was, you know, it was quite something to hear the story, you know, you kinda wanna, you know. The guy basically, you know, everybody that he touched, he made them a little better. You know, the guy had such a varied background, and I know, you know, Karen knows him, you know, Karen Alexander knows him, you know, he lent his van for her to use, you know, for her enterprise, her very worthy enterprise, and, you know, so he, he was involved with a lot of charity stuff, a lot of helping out people that were less advantaged, and I really think he was, you know, he was a pillar of this community, you know, and some of the more obscure pillars that aren't in here, in the room all the time, or, you know, they don't always get talked about, you know. I say the same thing about, about Daryl's dad, you know, he was part of the community that people didn't talk about, you know, and, and people should talk about him, they should talk about him in here, not just if they're in a particular service club or some kind of a thing. So I just wanted to talk about him. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you sharing that, Mr. Morgan. All right, anybody else want to chat? Good? All right. Moving on to public hearings. The following four public hearings are related to the same project. The council can receive one presentation for all four public hearings. Ms. Coletta, our planning and development director, will you please present this item?
Absolutely, thank you, and good evening. So the project that we have before you this evening is known as the Green River Ranch Project. Specifically, it's the Green River Ranch Specific Plan Amendment, and it's the Green River Ranch Business Park Industrial Development. So as you indicated, we do have several applications this evening that we are going to discuss. One will be a general plan amendment, then we will have a specific plan amendment, a tentative tract map, a precise plan, as well as a subsequent EIR. So just to give the council some reference, the city does have a Green River Ranch specific plan, and that was approved back in 2001, and that is for approximately 163 acres that is located on Green River Road between Dominguez Ranch Rose and Fresno Road. Right now, the area is completely entitled for development, and it does allow for general commercial as well as commercial and industrial mixed use and estate residential. So the general plan amendment application this evening is actually going to reorganize some of the existing land uses that already exist on the property. So you will notice that you see that exhibit on the top right is currently what exists today, and what the applicant proposes to do is actually going to take the mixed use to designation, which is for commercial and industrial, and relocate the piece that is on the north side of Green River Road and bring it to the south side of Green River Road. At the same time, the general commercial designation that is on the south side of Green River Road will be relocated to the north side of Green River Road. So the general commercial will now stand on its own rather than be integrated with the mixed use to designation. Additionally, there is an estate residential designation within the specific plan that is gonna be completely removed and replaced with an open space designation. And then when you do all of this, there is going to be an adjustment in the overall acreage. In the mixed use to designation, that's actually gonna be reduced by about 9.7 acres, and the general commercial's gonna be reduced about 2 and 1/2 acres. acres, and the general commercial is going to be reduced about two and a half acres. The estate residential completely goes away, and the open space designation is going to increase by 100 acres. So the specific plan amendment is going to align with the general plan and basically do the same thing when it comes to the reallocation of the land uses. What is going to change with respect to the land uses, just the naming, they currently have a mixed use two designation, and that's going to be renamed Business Park Industrial. I do want to note for the council that the current permitted land uses in the specific plan under the mixed use two designation does allow for industrial and warehouse development. So going to the Business Park Industrial Development does not change any of that. So that land use currently exists, and it will continue to exist. So by changing the name, you are not adding something that is not already allowed.
Ms. Coletta, then, does, is, is it just for clarity of purpose? Is that the title change?
The amendment will also change the permitted land uses table, and what it's going to do, it's going to remove the hotel and motel use that will no longer be allowed, that's currently allowed, and they will be taking that out of the specific plan. And then restaurants with drive-throughs are currently permitted by right, and they are changing that to with a conditional use permit, and that is actually something that came out through the planning commission process. When it comes to the signage, they are actually reducing the number of signs within the specific plant area from 18 to nine, so that's almost half. And then the sign height is also going to be reduced from 80 feet to 45 feet. And then the building height is also being reduced from 80 feet and six stories down to 55 feet and three stories. So the amendment will also be making changes as well to that. So the tentative tract map is going to only subdivide 155 acres of the specific plant area on the south side, and that is in the Business Park Industrial and Open Space Designations. And that is really to accommodate and facilitate development that you're going to see here in just a moment. Lots one through five are going to be for future building pads to accommodate associated parking as well as onsite landscaping. Lot seven will accommodate some grading areas within the slope, but it still will be entirely open space. And then lot six will be 100% of natural open space that will be preserved in its current condition. Additionally, on the right-hand side, you see that they are also going to be acquiring some of the city's land. Back in 2022, I want to say, we already declared, 2023, we actually declared this property to be surplus land, and so we already made that decision to sell this to the developer, its excess right-of-way along Green River Road, as well as some open space area for them to continue with the grading and to re-landscape. So that's a decision that we already looked at about over a year ago. I also want to take note for you that the applicant will still be doing some improvements to Green River Road, and this exhibit highlights that for you. You will see along the north side of Green River Road, they will be adding an additional lane, and this will be able to accommodate westbound traffic that will tie into some Caltrans restriping, which will provide a right turn lane onto eastbound 91 On Ramp. Additionally, on the south side, they're going to be adding an additional right turn lane just past Fresno Road, and this will allow them to provide rights into their project entrance. Green River Road is a major ulterior street, so it's three lanes in each direction, but in order to not interfere with that through traffic, for those that are want to make right turns, they are providing those additional lanes. So the developer will be doing that as well with this project. This here depicts the site layout that, for the Business Park Industrial Development. As you can see, there's a total of five buildings there, and this will actually occur on about 49 acres. The largest building, which is building one, is to the far west, which is farther from Dominguez Ranch Road, and that is about 285,000 square feet. And then four buildings are going to be clustered closer to Dominguez Ranch Road, and those buildings range from anywhere from about 80,000 to 126,000 square feet. So this just gives you an actual example of where the grading is going to occur on that property and as well as the site layout of the buildings. And one thing you should take note is that you will see that with respect to the loading areas, those have all been situated inward, so they are not facing the street view at all. Additionally, this project will also be putting in a traffic signal along its new project street entrance there, and that is to allow for full-term movements in and out of the project site. And then eventually, on the north side, if that commercial site is ever developed, the idea is that they would actually tie into that same intersection, so you would have that one opening right there along Green River Road. The applicant provided these photo simulations just to give you an idea of what this real project will look like once the site is developed, and the project, and the picture on the upper left-hand side there is at the corner of Dominguez Ranch and Green River Road. As you can tell by this, the pad of the property will be raised, and it's going to be anywhere from 12 feet to 55 feet above the street grade. They also will be creating two-to-one manufactured slopes, however, that will be entirely landscaped. So the buildings are not going to sit right at the street corner. The closest setback is 163 feet from the street, so that is a rather extensive setback. So what they've done in there is they added a lot of lush landscaping, and they're also going to be adding some project signage in order to spruce up that corner. They also provide a simulation of what it looks like when you're looking westbound in the Sierra del Oro neighborhood. The bottom left there is if you come driving down Dominguez Ranch Road going south, you see that the buildings there off to the left, you can actually see the freeway there up on the right-hand side. And then the closest property to this project site is San Viscaya Circle. It's actually about 136, or 131 feet higher than the project site, and it's separated from the project site about 250 feet. So that view was just to show where the closest residents would be to the project on the lower right-hand side. This is just here, a landscape plan, just showing you how much extensive landscaping is going to be required for this project. Again, they will have an abundance amount of trees, ground cover, hydroseed, and all of that will be done by the developer as they develop out this project site. So that's just an example for you to see how that will occur. Project signage, as I indicated, they are making amendments. The business park will have all monument signage, and none of that signage will exceed a height of six feet, and of course, it will match the architecture of the building. And this just gives you here an idea of what it will look like when you come in off the new street off of Project Street A from Green River Road of how they will design that. And then the environmental impact report. So a little bit of history for the council. The Green River Ranch Specific Plan already has an EIR, and that was certified back in 2001 by the city council at that time. And it evaluated all the topics according to the California Environmental Quality Act. The EIR does identify mitigation measures associated with any environmental impacts. However, the report did identify that there were two significant and unavoidable impacts associated with the project even with mitigation measures, and that was related to transportation and air quality. So at that time, the council decided that they would adopt an overriding consideration because there were aspects about the project that they felt were a benefit, and it would outweigh the impacts. And I do want to make note that CEQA recognizes that not every environmental impact can be mitigated. We do our best to put in mitigation measures, but sometimes they just cannot reach an acceptable threshold. So there is that ability for local agencies to do an overriding consideration if they feel there are project benefits that outweigh those impacts, and that's exactly what happened in 2001. So we went ahead and did a subsequent EIR in 2024, and basically, those same two impacts that you saw in 2001 with respect to transportation and air quality exist today. So with the subsequent EIR, we are going to still be facing that same situation. With respect to transportation, a lot of it has changed when it comes to CEQA. CEQA loves to change every couple of years and have new rules. So in 2001, transportation was all based on level of service, and it all dealt with, you know, the number of trips going in and out of a project. Well, that changed in 2020. We now do vehicle miles travel because the state wants people to travel less to get to their origin and destination. So we were one of the first cities that actually implemented VMT with our general plan update. So our vehicle miles traveled should be no more than 40.6, and the project's VMT is going to be 62. So no matter what we do, we just can't reduce the number of miles that a vehicle that is going to be traveling to and from this project. So therefore, we are going to have to do an override. The next one is air quality. When it comes to mobile sources and stationary sources, those same thresholds are going to be exceeded, so therefore, we need to, to look at doing an overriding consideration with respect to that. I do want to highlight the project benefits for you. There is open space preservation now. We have about 103 acres, and of that 80 acres is actually going to be dedicated for wildlife habitat preservation, and the party responsible for that will be the Riverside County MSHCP. That did not exist under the prior plan. This is something that the developer has decided to do for them and has worked with them closely on preserving that south end that you saw there on lot six, which was about 80 acres. It's also going to promote our economic base and also create job generation. And although CEQA does not allow you to use trips with respect to environmental analysis, this project actually reduces the quantity of trips to the project site from the original analysis that was done in 2001. In 2001, based on the uses that were allowed then, it generated about over 11,000 trips. This project reduces that down to 4,300 trips, which is a reduction of 61%. So it's always hard to physically see vehicle miles traveled, but you can always quantify trips, and this is something that is still a benefit because it actually reduces the number of trips going in and out of this area. So that is something for us to consider. So with that, we are recommending approval of all these applications this evening and asking the city council to certify the final EIR. I am here as well as the applicant and their technical team to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Coletta. Okay, the public hearings are now open. Ms. Edwards, has the city clerk's office received correspondence or speaker cards from the public regarding these items?
Mayor, yes, we received one written comment, and we have 10 speaker cards for this item.
Okay, let's start with the speakers. So 10 of you want to talk? So if you could just maybe line up in the back and then, you know, start filing your way down to the podium here, and it looks like Mr. Morgan will kick us off.
I want to, I want to thank you for the work that you did to, to make this a better project. I know you've been working on this kind of, I wouldn't say behind the scenes is the wrong way to put it, you've been, it's been pretty public about the interactions that you've had with the people in the area, and putting it out there and actually bringing the, bringing the area, you know, bringing people in the area and getting them involved, you know, about how to make this project better than what it was. I think the project now is a lot better than what it was, and it was really fun at the planning commission meeting to, to sort of have a discussion with the, that set aside the area that was like, take, it was originally, the original proposal was going to be residential, and it came out at the meeting like, oh, hey, we can do this other thing because there's, because it's in this fire danger area, we could just take the residential off of the, off of the, off of the proposal altogether. And it got, so it got even better. It wasn't just a wink, wink, residential that we're not going to build, you know, we promised to like, no, this is actually dedicated land, and, and formalize it. And that's, that's all to the good, you know, to reduce the trips, to expand the economic base, you know, kind of reduce the footprint, just kind of bring the density and bring the quality to the place, and I think it's going to be, it's going to be a benefit to that area. The shopping center right there is going to be, going to be killing it because of this. So I think it's, it's all, it's all good, and I think it's going to be less impactful than what would have been there before, a lot less impactful. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Joe. Welcome.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jonathan Daly. I'm a Marine Corps veteran, I'm a proud member of Launa, the laborers' union. I'm also a resident here in Corona. I married my wife over at Eagle Glen, and we had our son a year and a half ago at Corona Regional, so two of the best days of my life happened here in Corona. I absolutely love living here. We're here to support this project, to support this developer. They've gone, they've gone above and beyond to ensure that there's a skilled and trained workforce, union agreement for this project, and that's absolutely incredible, especially since it's right down the street from me and many, many of our other members. The local hire aspect is, I feel like tremendous, for reasons I just stated. It allows us more time to spend time with our families and not have to travel to LA, to San Diego, to work. And it allows us to spend more money within Corona. My wife already does, she's a stay-at-home mom. Thanks to, thanks to my job, I'm, I'm able to do that, and in California, that's incredibly rare, so she's loving it, I'm loving it. But it also, the smaller picture, which is a big picture for us as the members, it also provides us with healthcare. I saw the original bill for my son, and I was really happy that that was taken care of. Food on our tables, absolutely incredible, and a roof over our heads. That's, that's my main priority here on this earth is to provide that to my family, and thanks to a developer like this and this incredible project, I'm able to do that. So on behalf of Launa and our members here locally, we ask you please approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service to our country. Next, please.
Hey, good evening, Zach Strosters, CARE California. First and foremost, thank you for your time, mayor and honorable councilors. CARE California tonight is in overwhelming support of this project, and I'm going to keep it brief. I think the project speaks for itself, and I'm sure that most of the community is probably going to come and, you know, just echo a lot of the same sentiments, but CARE does not just rubber stamp projects, projects carte blanche and say, you know, okay, this looks good, let's plop it down somewhere. We really take a very, you know, high scrutiny level, look at each project and the community that's being proposed in, the quality of the project and the nature of the developer. And so with regards to this particular project, one of the things that stood out, and I think the previous speaker actually, the previous two speakers really dealt with this a lot in various aspects, was this project was very, it was, it was ready to suit itself to the needs. I think staff also talked about that, you know, the different iterations over time, and the developer just being willing to come back over and over again and say, what do you need? How can we change? How can we improve? One of the other points that I want to bring out is, with regards to infrastructure development, that's always a very big thing for CARE, to make sure that this is something that brings improvements, and they talked a little bit about that. It's an environmentally friendly project, it does so much to try to beautify and enhance, and so we recognize if the community is in favor, if the city itself benefits, and if, if this is a sound project, then we want to make sure and put our stamp of approval on it. So for those reasons and so many more, CARE California overwhelmingly approves, and we ask that you do the same. Thanks, and God bless you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, honorable mayor and fellow city councilors. My name is Joshua Gestalum, and I am here to speak in support of the Green River Amendment and Industrial Park Project. About seven years ago, I was involved in a very bad accident, and I was in the hospital, I was prescribed opiates, and before this accident, I was a functioning member of society. I had a good job, I had a young child at the time. And after the accident, I was prescribed opioids, and I became addicted to the opioids. And when my prescription was over, I still had pain, I didn't have pain management, so I had to turn to the streets, and I started buying pills off the streets. I didn't know at the time they were fentanyl, but by the time that I did know, I was a full-blown addict. Now, the reason why I bring this up is, we all know that we're facing a drug epidemic in this country. Over 100,000 people died last year from fentanyl alone. And I eventually became one of those people that overdosed. I didn't die, thanks to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, I was offered a second chance. But for, for four years after my accident, I was running amok in Riverside County, I was a homeless drug addict. And after I overdosed and came to at a hospital, I received the Lord with the chaplain on my bedside, and I never went back. So I have three years clean and sober, thanks to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. But when Jesus saves a man, one of the first things that a man ought to do is refocus on his family, including his kids, and providing for them. Now, one way that a man can do that, especially a man who, who is going to be saved and start a road to recovery, right, is jobs, good jobs. And this project represents hundreds of jobs, from industrial to commercial to even the construction to build it. So for this reason, I ask that you approve this project. Thank you, and God bless you, and God bless the city of Corona.
All right, we're so glad you're doing better, too.
Thank you.
Keep up the good fight. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Robert Rommel, and I am with the ironworkers of Local 416. We are here tonight in support of this project. Well, it's a great project. It encompass, it encompasses everything. It encompasses, it encompasses everything that we need. Community benefits, as you could see what you guys seen in the presentation, the local hire, skilled and trained. Local hire is key, like the gentleman Jonathan, the first speaker said. It's going to allow the community, our members, to work here in Corona, stimulate the local economy and bring back to, to this city, right? So we ask tonight for a yes vote and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rosino.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jeff Rosino, live in Corona, also a original owner in Saratoga, also. Been there for 30 some odd years. One thing I wanted to bring up, give Jim a lot of credit for, is the fact that the developer and the members of the community that live locally there spent the time together. And I've been involved with commercial real estate for also for 30 years. And this type of representation by all parties is phenomenal. And to see that we have here this favor of the project, I too agree with it and it's the impact that it does have is a lot less than what we had been proposed before. So I'm in in favor for this and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jeff. Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, staff, community. My name's Louis Lopez. I'm a business agent for the Ironworkers Local 433. And I brought two of my local members here. Jose lives right behind Corona High School and Mikey here, he actually graduated Corona in 88. They have numerous family members, six?
Seven.
Seven, nine?
Eight.
Eight? So brought them here just that, to prove that we are locally here. I want to take this time to really emphasis and educate people on what is skilled and trained. Skilled and trained sometimes is overlooked. What skilled and trained is, the perspective I like to put out there is, if, if, if you yourself or your spouse or even your child was going to get a surgery, had to go, go under the knife and get a surgery, you would make sure that you want that surgeon to be certified, to be skilled and trained and have the proper certifications and licenses to perform that surgery. That's what I kind of put in perspective when it comes to the applicant here, providing a, a project and delivering it to the city of Corona. Every trades that's represented here tonight, from laborers to ironworkers to pipe trades, that's what our apprenticeship school does. And we put our members in there, anywhere from three to five years apprenticeship programs. We are training them for their specific skill. It's all accredited by the state of California. Those are licensed trade women and men that are performing the work, that are going to deliver a safest project and the, and the best project to, to the city of Corona. And I want to point that out because the applicant doesn't want to shortchange Corona. Wants to deliver the most successful and best product that they can. And that makes a difference. You get what you pay for. So that's what it's kind of like. It's like any of your children, if you send them to college to get a degree, you expect that they come out and get paid a good wage, a good package. Same thing with, with these men and women that come back and go through the apprenticeship school, yeah, we're about 10, average $10 more expensive than some of those workers that come from out of state. But they went through the school. They went through college for their trade. And they deserve it because they're local, they're local residents. So when that local hire is there, that means that they got preference. I'm also a Marine Corps veteran and we have partnerships with helmets to hard hats. So when those men and women come back from serving our country, we have a direct entry program, every single one of our trades, to get those veterans straight in the apprenticeship program. And I'll tell you right now, most of them, they excel to leadership, just because of that military bearing that they bring. And it's exciting to see those men and women prosper in the trades. So I ask that the city of Corona unanimously votes for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service. Next, please.
Good evening, council public. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak regarding this project. Name is Jordan Brusellis and I'm a resident of Corona. I wanted to come here tonight and let city council know that I'm in favor of this project. I believe it'll be a good project for the city when it's completed and bring additional high-paying jobs into the city, boosting our local economy, as well as giving local residents the opportunity to work closer to home and not have to deal with long commutes into Orange County or the Riverside and Moreno Valley area. I'm also very happy to hear that the developer for this project, Western Realco, has decided to include a local hire component for both the residents and the city of Corona businesses to help with the construction of this project. This will also help boost our local economy during construction as workers will likely spend their dollars in the city for things like lunches, snacks, gas, et cetera. This will be a win-win for the city, both during and after construction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's David Hanson. I'm a business agent for Local 398 Plumbers and Steamfitters. We've been serving this community in the greater San Gabriel and Pomona Valleys for 125 years or so. We support this project and your yes vote today shows that you support us and Corona as well. This project allows for hardworking men and women to advance in their careers while earning middle-class wages and benefits. Most importantly, the developer has made a pledge to hire local and a skilled construction workforce that will, you know, they, sorry, let me step back a little bit. You've heard a lot tonight about the local hire and I want to make sure everybody understands what that means. So not only does it mean that when I get a call for manpower, that I have an obligation to make sure that Corona residents get their, the first shot at those jobs, no matter where they are on the out-of-work list. But in addition, if I can't meet those obligations, I have an obligation to, to bring more people in from this community specifically. So whether it's this project or any other project that has both that skilled and trained workforce language and the local hire requirements, it means that we feed this community with that workforce. We, we bring those men and women out of your community. We train them up with skills that'll last them a lifetime. Again, we have a five-year accredited apprenticeship. We just spent $150 million on a brand-new training center to make sure that we have the absolute best, high-quality apprenticeship that, that money can buy. The, the, the reality is that plumbers and steamfitters are responsible for public health. And, and we've all heard the saying that, that more men and women are, are saved, their lives are saved from, from good quality sanitation than, than, than what doctors do. And so we, what we're doing is developing that workforce here in your community. When construction workers earn a dollar, they spend it here at home. They, they frequent barber shops and local eateries and help spin that economy. Those jobs, when they're, they're low-paying jobs, they don't mean much. But when they're good-paying union jobs that, that allow for homeownership and, and community betterment, they, they really spin that local economy and, and have a big magnifying effect. So we, we, we thank you and hope that you'll support us and support this project. Thank you very much.
All right. Now the applicant comes up. Jeremy, would you like to just, do you want three minutes or would you like to just be there for questions?
Introducing myself. Thank you very, very much, Mayor and council members. Appreciate the opportunity. My name is Jeremy Map with Western Realco. Tonight, I am here as well as some of our consultants to answer any technical questions you may have. Appreciate the opportunity. Joanna, it was a fantastic job. I think you outlined everything, so happy to answer any questions.
Okay, if you could just kind of stay close to the mic. Anybody else want to speak on this tonight? Seeing none, Ms. Edwards, we had a written comment first and then a Zoom call?
Yes, we have written comment and Zoom.
Okay, let's see the written.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As a 16-year resident of the Montanaro neighborhood adjacent to Green River, I always wondered what would become of the beloved Horse Ranch. A light industrial business park was not what I envisioned. When the property was sold to the applicant five years ago, I was disappointed. Mr. Steiner invited me to join a group of residents to review early project concepts. Initially, I was skeptical. Their other projects were fine, but were built in non-residential areas and felt incompatible with our neighborhood. My hope was that if the project had to be built, we should make it the best possible version. Over the next four years, the project evolved through community input, something more palatable. Some key improvements include larger buildings divided into small ones, dogs oriented towards the project interior, about 90 acres placed in permanent conservation, mechanical equipment moved to ground level to improve views, enhanced architecture, windows and materials, Green River Road traffic, bike and pedestrian improvements, public art and upgraded tree plantings, trail access preservation, and a name honoring the ranch heritage. I believe this applicant has acted in good faith, not only listening, but acting to address concerns, given the diminishing local control over housing policy and recent experiences with developers who ignore community input. My perspective has evolved. The developer has consistently demonstrated a desire to be a good neighbor. Since this property will be developed, I believe this proposal to be a likely best option. I support your approval and the written comments were from Matt Olson.
Okay, thank you, Sylvia. Can we have someone on the phone?
Hi there. Okay. My name is Orion Wise. I'm with the ownership for the neighboring retail center, Green River Promenade. And we've been talking to the applicant for, pretty much since they purchased the property. As far as I can tell, we've also wondered what would sort of become of this property, but we've seen from community feedback at various planning commission and city council hearings over the last decade, that residents have a lot of different opinions. But the developer's really gone above and beyond with community outreach. If the presentation they've shown tonight is similar to what they showed at planning commission, I mean, they're, they're going above and beyond with union and local labor, as you've heard. One of the things that stood out to me on the presentation before was planting mature trees. That, that might seem like something small, but that's like an expensive ask for a developer. And so they're, they're really doing things that not everybody does and doing it the right way. One other thing that I know people have complained about in the past is the traffic. But in terms of impact, having a, a lower density use is, is going to be preferable here. And so we think that of all the future potential uses, this is going to be one of the best ones. So I know there's a lot of community support and we, we hope that the city council gives unanimous consent for this.
Thank you, Mr. Wise. Ms. Edwards, anybody else?
Mayor, we do not have any more speaker cards for this item.
Okay. So we are going to go ahead and close the public hearing. If my colleagues will indulge me, could I get first shot at comments? Thank you. Thank you. I just want to rewind just a little bit, just to kind of let everybody know how we got here. So I was elected in 2018, into 2018, and during my campaign, I walked all of District 4 twice and basically listened to the community. And what they told me unanimously was quit building houses, we need things to do, we need jobs and we need open space. And I was pretty happy about that because that was exactly how I felt, too. So it was pretty easy when I had been on a month and I was approached by Western Realco and Jeremy and said, hey, you know, we bought this property and this is what we would like to build on it. What are your thoughts? And I says, I have no idea. Let me, well, first I got to talk to Ms. Coletta to see if what you want to build is even allowed because I didn't have a clue. But what I told him was, here's what you're going to do. Basically, I said, we don't want any houses. This is what the community's telling me. We want things to do, we want jobs and we want open space. And I'm going to put together a citizens committee that I'm going to require you to meet with so they can help shape this project. And I think his first thought was probably an expletive, but it immediately, he said, you know what? Okay, I'll work with you. And I'm like, cool. So I put together a committee and that committee was myself, Karen Alexander, Matt Olson, John and Susan Fox, Rachel Lamalle, Renee Manzi, Matthew Trapp, Roger Conard and Jeff Rosino. And we started meeting with the developer on a fairly consistent basis. We actually did a field trip down to Brea to look at one of his projects. And as Matt Olson stated in his, in his email, it was nice, but it was nicer the end of a cul-de-sac, you know, in a, in a commercial district and it wouldn't look good on the Horse Ranch. This Horse Ranch is a pretty sensitive topic. We've all loved our Horse Ranch. None of us wished this project was coming if we could have saved our Horse Ranch, but that wasn't going to happen. So we were just really impressed by just how receptive he was to the community. And, you know, when you put 10 people in a room, they all got different thoughts. It's like herding cats. And he did a really good job and he was very sincere with, with his efforts. Unlike what we've seen from maybe foremost community who could give a crap about what we think. Western Realco is the real deal. About a year and a half ago, Dwight Woodward, who's a citizen in District 4, he goes, hey, are they going to block that trail off Dominguez Ranch that goes on the other side of the canyon? And I'm like, man, I don't think I've been on that one. So Dwight and I went and hiked it and it was gorgeous. Literally five minutes off Dominguez Ranch Road, you're in heaven. And it, I don't think many people really know about it. So I called city manager Jacob Ellis. I said, hey, we're not going to block this, are we? And they go, oh, crap. So Jacob, our assistant city manager, our trails guy, Matt, a couple other people, me and Dwight, we all went to the site and we hiked it. And we're like, oh my God, we got to figure out a way because yes, we're kind of blocking it right now with the project. We got to figure out a way not to do that. I called Jeremy and I says, dude, we need you on this one, too. And he came through and he has made sure that we still have access from Dominguez to this beautiful trail system. So I just can't say enough about it. Thank you very much. I will turn it over to my colleagues if they have any questions or comments. Tony?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have some comments. You know, this, this council has been met with some developers that have been less than, less than friendly and less than open to, you know, feedback from the community and really don't take that partnered approach. And I guess by all rights, you could have just said, hey, this is what we're going to build and take it. And this council really doesn't like that either. And we've been very vocal when that has happened and it has happened, unfortunately. But this is an example of, of a true partnership where you guys want to make a great project as best as you can by taking all, you know, all the input and, and, you know, making things work. You've got, you know, a bunch of different labor groups here that are all in support of it. You don't have any citizens that have come down with pitchforks trying to stop this. And so that is something that, you know, doesn't go unnoticed and we appreciate it because, you know, obviously with community input and getting a better project, community's happy and I believe that you're going to have a better project because of it. And so for me, it's just important to acknowledge that and say, thank you. We really appreciate your partnered approach with this. We look forward to, you know, a finished project. And I think for me, the, the biggest takeaway was going from three acres of open space to 100, 100 acres of open space in an area that, I mean, I, I don't plan on hiking up there, but, you know, some people, some people do. You know, that is going to, you know, I'll, I'll drive up to the top and I'll look down. But, you know, that some people are going to, you know, are be very excited and appreciative of. So for me, it's just important to acknowledge that you guys are true partners and I really appreciate that and I'm sure my colleagues do as well. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
I'm echoing what, literally what everybody in the room has said and, and I would say, you know, Western Realco's done, this is truly, you know, the win-win-win-win, which is, we got great setbacks. You know, somebody that grew up in Corona and those horses that were there that everybody loved so much, they actually were somewhere else. They were at the end of Paseo Grande and, and I used to go ride them and, and I did, you know, was with those horses quite a bit and, and probably 20 years before and I was sad to see them go. But I, I will say that this product, this, the product that is being put forward is, is beneficial because of three things. One, the traffic, you know, what was already approved to be there would have been a nightmare for the residents and for commuters coming through that area. So this drastic reduction in, in traffic is, is going to be great. Economic development part, I cannot wait to hear the first person that goes to work in one of those buildings that lives there and says, I can walk, I can ride my bike, I can find a way to get there. And I can't wait. And then lastly, the thing, you know, I think we all have little stories about adding things in, you know. I, you know, I think when I met with Jeremy and his team, I had been working with RCTC on their 9171 project and, you know, haggling with them about having an extra lane, at least the room on the right of way to have a lane you could turn right on. And they said, well, Wes, you don't have anything yet. And I said, well, we have this project that's kind of coming, and, you know, it's in the process, and we're kind of working through it. And they kind of said, well, we'll plan for it, but, you know, we can't guarantee it. So when Jeremy and his team met with me, I brought it up, and they said, Wes, no problem. This is something we want to do. We want to make sure it's done, and traffic engineering is already all over already. But it's going to make a big difference and help folks move there in an area that's been notoriously tough to move in. Will it solve all the problems? No, but I think the benefits fear will outweigh any impact. So I want to say thanks. Thanks again for being open, and hopefully, you know, you can find some more projects here to do in the city of Corona, and we can find a way to make them happen. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to, excuse me, I just want to build off of what's already been said. Jim, I'm very impressed that you set up this committee and the caliber of people you gathered with Matt, Jeff, Roger, Dwight, and the others. I don't remember their names. But this is when smart development comes into your city, and it's done right. And for so many years, we've had sloppy development. So Jeremy, for you to come in, respect the needs of the citizens, respect the needs of the city, enhance the city, it's all admirable. And if the tenant you're telling me that is planning on moving in, it's a phenomenal tenant, I hope they're still moving in. So I'm really happy. I really feel comfortable that this process was done how it should have been done, and I hope every project was like this. The, I can stop kicking myself out of meetings. I just wanted one word of caution. I don't know if solar panels are required for the building, but if they are, just make sure there's no glare seen from the freeway and from the residential houses. And I'm sure Joanne will catch all that anyways. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
I can't add more to what has been said, but I do think that this is, like, let's make a note, right? Like, this is a, this will serve in the future as a future case study of what good development can look like and what strong and healthy leadership can look like. And I think that that is both Jeremy and Jim, for you two to meet, to have the, you know, not let egos or preconceptions get in the way and move in good faith for the betterment of the community. And I just want to give you both kudos for making that happen because from there came more positive engagement, and it really has created a project that I think, I mean, with this much support and from so many different stakeholders, it makes it really exciting. So this is going to be a, at least for me, I'm making a little note. This is a future case study of what good development can look like in the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll just make one final comment. One of the things that the committee was kind of going back and forth on was what type of monument, I mean, the horse ranch, it's our horse ranch, you guys, and we can't just throw something there and not remember what we used to always love when we drove through Corona or when we got off of Green River and immediately looked to the right to see all the horses. We had some different thoughts about it. Should it be on the east side of the project? Should it be on the west side? East side by Dominguez Ranch or west side by Fresno Canyon? Some mixed feelings. I wanted by Fresno Canyon because right when you get off the freeway is when you would have seen the horses. So I proposed a couple items to Jeremy about ideally if we could put something to memorialize the horse ranch at the west side by Fresno Canyon. I know there's some challenges there with elevation. If we have to do it on the east side, okay, but let's just keep that communication open and know that that's something that I think we're really going to want to see there. So with that, I would like to move to approve this project.
Second. I seem to be seconding everything tonight, so.
Ms. Cassius, seconded after I move. Please vote. Passes 5-0.
Mayor, we do need a vote on each individual item for the public hearings.
That's right, huh? Yeah. Okay, no, that's cool. We're good. All right, so we got 9.1, which is the general plan amendment, 2020-0002, amending the land use designation of a total of 158.54 acres. And then we have 9.2, which is specific plan amendment 2020-0006, a change and reorganization zoning designations. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Ms. Cassius moves.
Second.
And this motion needs to be read.
This motion needs to be read. Seconded by Mr. Richards, Ms. Jack A.
Is it page eight?
This one right here.
Okay. So introduced by title only and waif full reading of consideration of ordinance number 3409, first reading of an ordinance approving an amendment to the Green River Ranch specific plan SP 00-001 to change and reorganize the land use designations and make corresponding revisions to the maps, tables, illustrations, and text throughout the Green River Ranch specific plan SPA 2020-0006.
All right. We have a motion and a second on that, I believe, right? And we've submitted. Vote in progress.
Mayor, can we get your vote?
About to hit the damn thing. 5-0. Okay, now it's 9.3, tenant track map 37963 to subsidize 1.54, 0.5 acres into seven lots. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. And Tom, please vote. And that passes 5-0. 9.4, precise plan 2020-0000. All right. So 5-0, that officially passes. Congratulations, Jeremy, and thank you again. All right, we got administrative reports number 10. This was actually my request for council consideration to adjust the regular meeting start time. Ms. Dr. Mears, would you please present this item?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. On January 9th, Mayor Steiner submitted a future gender request proposing changing the start time of regular city council meetings from 6:30 p.m. to 6 o'clock p.m. This proposal also includes adjustments to study sessions to improve accessibility and public participation. The council provided initial consent on January 15th to bring this item forward for further discussion. Currently, the meeting start time is set by Corona Municipal Code, Section 2.08.010, requiring an ordinance amendment to implement this change. Staff has evaluated the proposal and recommends adopting the meeting start time via resolution for added flexibility. If the council wishes to proceed with the change tonight, the proposed ordinance is ready for a first reading. The second reading will follow on February 19th. With the change taking effect 30 days later, the first city council meeting under the new 6 o'clock p.m. start time will be on April 2nd. Lastly, it's recommended that council approves resolution number 2025-011, approving the city council meeting schedule for calendar year 2025. Concludes my report. I defer to you for discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Mears. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public on this item?
Mayor, yes, I have one speaker card for this item.
Okay. Mr. Morgan.
Joe Morgan, 2063, ran, all right. Thank you again. Thank you again for doing this. This is all to the good. It seems like every time you get near that seat, either before, you know, vice mayor in the first year, you make positive changes, and you've brought a lot to this, you've brought a lot to the table, you, and I appreciate Ms. Cassius' input on this, too, as well. So this is going to be, this will be good for you guys. It'll be good for residents. It'll be good for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. All right, is there any questions or comments for my colleagues on this topic?
I do want to, yeah, I just want to note that this change, because I know we've, you know, the body in our meetings have changed through the years, and I think that's a good thing. I think government should, you know, expand and restrict as needed, right? So I think that's a good thing. I, for any, if, for anyone's fear that something might be lost in the process, which is something that, you know, a red flag that always comes up for me, rest assured that should more time be needed, should, you know, there feel like there's a time constraint, we can always pause on a subject, bring it back, extend the conversation. That's always, that's always an option. And I think that's something that the five of us need to be really conscious of because there have been moments when, you know, study sessions will end simply because we have a next meeting that we need to get to. By incorporating these conversations into the council meetings, we can potentially, you know, be in discussion for a very long time. So one of the suggestions was, you know, if we can front load or be very conscious of when there's a topic that, you know, maybe we have a lot of folks in the room for, like, let's bring those conversations to the beginning of the meetings so we can free up our residents to have the discussion and to move on. And if the discussion is taking a very long time, let's be proactive about saying, hey, you know, we've, maybe we've explored it a lot. Maybe there's a point where we can, we can pause, and we can bring these things back. So I just want to say kudos and also remind us that, you know, these things don't have to stay static, and that's a good thing. Being flexible and showing that there's, you know, there's flexibility in our government is being responsive. So that's it.
All right, thank you. I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve this item. Is there a second? Second is from Tom. Introduced by title only and waif full reading of consideration of ordinance by number 3411, the first reading of an ordinance amending Section 2.08.010 of Corona Municipal Code to allow the city council to set its regular meeting start times by resolution. Please vote. Passes 5-0. Thanks, guys. All right, go to legislative matters. There's none. Boards and commissions, nothing from our library board of trustees, nothing from planning and housing, nothing from parks and rec. We have a regional meeting update by me. Okay. That's from my Riverside RTA board meeting of January 23rd. Let's see. Ridership still up, 8.4% compared to last year at this time, or I'm sorry, 11.5% compared to last year at this time. We had free rides yesterday. RTA joined, I'm sorry, RTA joined agencies nationwide by offering free rides on Transit Equity Day, which was yesterday. All right. To commemorate the life and legacy of civil rights icon Rosa Parks on her birthday, RTA offered fixed, offered free rides on all fixed routes and Go Micro buses, and they also kept the front row open on all, or front row closed to everybody on the, on each bus in honor of Rosa Parks. So that was pretty cool. And don't forget, youth 18 and under, ride free now until June 30th, 2025. The offer is available on all fixed route Go Micro buses. Next up, we have an update from Councilmember West speak on the California League of Cities Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee meeting of January 23rd, 24th. Councilmember speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. It was my chance to be the chair of the committee was really great. We actually had a couple of great speakers. One of the first things we talked about was our existing policy and guiding principles, lively discussion with about 40 of my fellow council members from around the state. We had a great presentation from the LEO's office. Two gentlemen that are, one is the director, Paul Steenhousen, is the director of the LEO, gave us an update on the governor's budget as related to housing, including that there will be $100 million allocated to the encampment and resolution fund grant program to create housing and homelessness agency emphasizing lowering housing costs and stronger accountability measures. In fact, one of the things he had mentioned during this meeting was that he was really looking forward to diving into establishing a set of criteria to make sure that people are using the housing money the right way and not have a bunch of extra steps that don't mean anything to make sure that money goes to places like Corona that are doing a good job with their money. So the other thing was there's a $60 million grant, additional $60 million for the California Compete Grant, and another $25 million that was invested specifically into a national semiconductor technology center in Northern California. And I was, they gave us a lot of, a lot of feedback on the governor's budget basically being really short in the next, not this year. They balanced it. However, the next three out years will have substantial deficits and that people need to be cognizant of that because there will be some cuts coming, including, I think this year, we saw a $300 million, $300 million cut to the housing, some housing policy information, or housing policy funding for low-income housing. And there'll be more and more of that that's coming because there just isn't the budget for it. The second thing is we got a presentation from Derek Kirk. He's the senior economic advisor for GoBiz, and he talked about incentivizing job creation and other programs and discouraging businesses from leaving the state. And he answered a lot of really tough questions from the council members in the room or give them a hard time about, you know, how businesses were leaving and what we could do about it. And he pledged to come back and give us another presentation, so hopefully the next time we meet. And then, let's see. Senator Wohab, which is the, she is the chair of the Senate Housing Committee. She unfortunately had a conflict and couldn't show, so she submitted our comments in writing to us. And then we settled on a work plan for the coming year, which is focused on affordable housing and homelessness, and then local control and land use with a strong emphasis ensuring that cities have flexibility and decision-making authority over zoning, land use, and housing policies in opposition to state-imposed one-size-fits-all mandates. And then lastly, economic development and sustainability theme is supporting small businesses, balancing economic growth within housing development, tying together economic development, transportation, and housing. So very excited to get unanimous vote on that. And then we had a legislative briefing on potential housing bills that were going to come. There's a bunch that are coming, but they're still being kind of formed up. So the next meeting, I'll be able to tell you the death by 1,000 cuts continues on the housing side, and that's it. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. But you're up again. Update from Councilmember West speak on Riverside County Transportation Commission, RCTC I-15 Committee Meeting of January 27th, 2025.
Let's see. So that meeting, we, there was only one topic, and that is, I think I reported on this briefly before, they, there was a decision by the committee that's going to be a recommendation to the full commission, which is to explore ways that we can build the 91 extension project either as a single lane instead of double lanes, which I oppose, and the rest of the committee also opposed because that doesn't do anything for our bottleneck. It transfers a little bit of it further south, but the bottleneck would still be there. But the committee voted overwhelmingly to look at a phased approach, but a dual lane approach that would bring the first phase to, at least through Indian Truck Trail, which will undoubtedly just move our, the bottleneck down, but we won't see the bottleneck at Cahalko and potentially having folks travel through my district and through Jim's district to get, you know, to get to the freeway. So we're, they're going to bring it back, do some additional studies, and come back with a, with a new and revised plan for us to vote on at a later date. And this is going to be, the next one will be your favorite of all.
I can't wait to get this one over with, too. So update from Councilmember West speak on the Southern California Association of Government, SCAG, Transportation Committee Meeting of January 30th. Councilmember speak. Please provide your update.
It was canceled.
Yay! That is my favorite meeting. All right, moving on to our last one. Update from Councilmember Tony Dodario on the Western Riverside County Regional Conversation Authority RCA meeting on February 3rd, 2025. Councilmember Dodario.
Not, it was not canceled, but I'll keep it brief. Just a couple discussion highlights. We had a conversation and ultimately approved some exempt surplus declaration of real property, 0.52 acres and 0.99 acres to the city of Wildomar and the city of Paris. This is for a project that's going to help alleviate traffic around the 215-15 interchange. The land is needed by the respective cities for roadway-related projects. And The land is needed by the respective cities for roadway-related projects, and replacement land has been identified by the city of Wildomar and RCA, which is of equal or superior value for conservation. Replacement land is not necessary in Paris since the parcel is within the MS HCP-covered road area. And then in Beaumont, there's a project that's 540 acres of commercial and industrial development along the 60 freeway. The MS HCP allows some criteria refinement, and the end result is, is that the applicant is going to provide a surplus of 231 acres of habitat into the MS HCP reserve for building in the area that they have, that they have chosen, which is a good thing. And really quick, the reserve of the month was the San Jacinto River Rancho's Meadows Reserve at Lone Cone, a 73-acre reserve that is located north of Highway 74 at the base of the San Jacinto Mountains, along the San Jacinto River, river east of the city of Hemet. The reserve was acquired by RCA in 2009 for approximately $908,000. There's no gangster birds that are in this, in this habitat. There is some riparian scrub, coastal sage scrub, alluvian fan sage scrub, all the scrubs and chaparral habitats. The area is a wildlife corridor for species, including the mountain lion, bobcat, San Bernardino kangaroo rat, which is different than the Stevens rat, kangaroo rat, the LA pocket mouse. And there was a lot of conversation about why all of these animals or species are named for areas that are not in Riverside County, but apparently Riverside County drove all of those species to Riverside County because they no longer exist in those areas that they're named for. I think we should rename them, but that's, that's just my own personal opinion. And this reserve also supports the illustrious Arroyo Chub, our favorite
Chub.
Four to six inch fish that lives in the San Jacinto River. That'll conclude my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Any word on the San Anna sucker fish?
Different, different drainage.
Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public on regional updates?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
City attorney, city attorney's reports and comments?
Nothing.
Nothing from Mr. Ellis from city manager's reports and comments?
No, Mayor, thank you.
All right, city council members' reports and comments. We are city council appointment of the Southern California Association of Government, SCAG, General Assembly Delegate and Alternate for the SCAG General Assembly Meeting of May 1st and 2nd. Which one of you chumps want to take this?
I could be there.
You're the big chump.
He has to be there, so.
Last's primary, Jackie secondary?
So long as he attends, yes.
Is everybody good with that?
Second.
All right.
Move in, second.
We got a vote on that, Ms. Edwards? Let's see.
No, we just need the consensus.
Okay, yeah. We all agree, and is there any speaker cards on that?
We do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Any comments from my colleagues on this, or you good?
Good job, Wes.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, let's see. We have future agenda items.
Hey, hey, don't you want to?
Did I forget something? Huh?
The council member reports, no? 16, 15 reports and comments?
That's, oh yeah. All right, well, let me say this first, since I started. Future agenda items, 16.1 has been removed from future agenda items. Now, do any of my colleagues have any comments?
I do.
You do.
Jackie, let's hear it from you.
Oh.
Boo.
Well, I actually, so I had a WR cog meeting on Monday, and so I, I'm sorry, I wanted to give a, a report out on it. I just wanted to share that there are seven new members. I'm actually stepping down from the IRN committee, there's a work conflict, and I just, you know, I actually have a job, and so I couldn't do it anymore. Anyway, but I did participate in an ad hoc committee. We authorized the purchase of an, of a, of a permanent building, WR. It, it makes a lot of financial sense in the long run and for, you know, it's, it's the right thing to do. So we have a current lease, it's up in '28. We authorized the purchase of another lease. We'll be able to rent out to other agencies and other tenants, and so that's, that's moving forward. We had a strategic planning session on January 10th, and the, the, the agency is moving in the right direction. There wasn't any, there wasn't anything huge that came from it. The other thing that was noteworthy from the meeting is that we, there was, everyone except one member voted in favor of adjusting membership dues, and this was a long process. We've been having this conversation for well over a year. It went through different committees, it went through the committees that, you know, include our, our admin staff, it went through the admin and finance subcommittee, which I'm also part of, and then it went through the entire commission. And so Corona's dues will be going up, but our dues went down during the recession. So as a, as a agency, we all said, hey, there's a lot going on, we need to cut back a bit. We did. We never readjusted, and the reality is that what's happening now is that we're paying, the admin work of the cog is getting paid and at the expense of our programs, and we can't, we can't be doing that. So we're adjusting it just slightly. Corona's dues are going up by a difference of just over $17,000. And so it's proportional, it's not, we're not retroactively getting any of that money, it's fair across the board. No one likes this going up, but it's now going to have a, an escalator built in rather than these large jumps. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to say?
I do.
Let's hear it.
And because Vice Mayor Casillas didn't mention it, I'm going to. I'm going to take everybody's thunder. Today, we all got to go and start destroying the South parking lot, and I couldn't be happier of the South Mall, that we, we've been talking about it for a long, long time, and it's now coming to fruition. City manager said that it's on an accelerated path, we will get it done as soon as we possibly can, but today was a good day. It was also a lot of fun watching Councilmember Casillas in her steel-toed high heels, taking some swings with a golden sledgehammer, but very happy that we are moving forward and getting that done and, and working on getting the South Mall up and becoming a, a great place for community together. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Just add a few things. One, I, I wanted to say a, a big thank you to Utilities Department. The, the new water rate, or the water payment website is phenomenal. It's like ridiculously easy to use. It's, it's, you know, welcoming. I felt like before when I was using it that I was going back in time to try and use it, like I was going back to the 80s. This is really great. It's, it's, it was wonderful. And I was a little bit worried the first time doing it, going, I'm going to have to put everything back in. It ran perfectly. So I just wanted a big shout out to your team, Tom, to, it was a great job. I want to say thank you to my colleagues that, for the additional trim that we authorized for Valencia because there were some safety issues, and I'm happy to see some concrete work going on at, in Zone 20, and I'm hoping that in the next, you know, month or so, Mr. Mayor, you and I can sit down and talk about what we can do about Zone 19 and, you know, go back out, talk to folks and see if we can come back with, with a recommendation to go forward and make that change. And also, I, you know, thank you, Mr. Morgan, for mentioning Ed Faxon. Ed was a, I agree with everything you said, Ed was a great guy. Had a lot of time to interact with Ed and his wife Linda. They were both members of the Corona Historic Preservation Society, and I had the pleasure of pushing Ed around at the Desi Ornez house and, and him just, you know, telling me all kinds of great stuff. And I, I enjoyed every time that I, I saw him and, and I know that the, all the wonderful things that he's done for the community, and it was sad to hear of his passing and did nothing but positive thoughts for his wife and, and his, his daughter. And then lastly, I hopefully, I'd like to, if we could adjourn.
I'll let you do that when it gets.
Okay.
Go ahead, Tom.
Just to build off of what Wes just said, Ed and his wife have, have the largest collection of citrus labels, of Corona citrus labels, and they've pledged to donate them to the Heritage Room when the time comes. But they're, they're, they've always been big believers in our city and great citizens. I, the last council meeting, I failed to mention this, but I wanted to thank the Corona Police Department. They invited the council out to Corona High School a few weeks ago as they were practicing for active shooter training. And the council members met with the chief, and he walked us through everything that was taking place, and we witnessed what the officers were training for. And these guys are finely, these officers are finely skilled, they, they really knew what they were doing. It was just impressive. I wish everybody could see their training and how efficient they are, and, and our, our city is in very good hands with the Corona Police Department. Just wanted to mention that. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Tom. So our next meeting's going to be, the council meeting's going to be February 19th, 2025, and Councilmember speak. Would you like to state your adjournment message?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would like to adjourn in the memory of Samuel Allen. He was a phenomenal soccer player. He was a junior at Santiago High School. He tragically passed away late last week, and he was not only a scholar athlete, a scholar, but an amazing athlete and a really great friend. You know, the, the outpouring from the community at his, they had a, a candlelight vigil for him a few days back, and, and it was, it was an amazing sight. Saw lots of pictures, and I wanted to just make sure that we put his family in our prayers and thoughts and that he may live on in our hearts and adjourn in his honor.
Thank you. Councilmember speak. This meeting is adjourned.